I'm just trying to line up and figure out all the pieces.
Yeah.
Trying to navigate through it. All right, like called a meeting order, please rise from the pledge allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Pastor?
Thank you.
All right, announcements and correspondences, if you plan on speaking during the public comment portion of the meeting today, please take a moment to fill out the sign in sheet if you've not done so already, and then I'll open up to the board announcements or correspondences. Done, you good?
I don't have anything, no.
Department heads, any announcements, correspondences? All right, hearing none, we have no scheduled meeting guests today. We'll move into meeting minutes.
Did we grab the?
I have the sign in sheets right here. Nope, there's nothing on it, yeah, all right.
Thanks, though.
All right, meeting minutes, we're gonna have to table the ones from one thirteen twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Those are still under review, and then we'll move into, I'll entertain a motion to accept the one twenty four twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second for discussion. During review of the meeting minutes, we did find a minor error that needs to be changed, and it will be noted in the meeting minute book, so the motion should include the change. Due to a rounding error by the Portage County Auditor's Office, the nine point five zero mill's resolution was updated to reflect two hundred and sixty two thousand, changed from two hundred and sixty one six seventy four in property tax revenue, and the one point nine mil resolution was updated to reflect five hundred and forty six thousand, changed from five hundred and forty six thousand four hundred and twenty two in the resolution to proceed for the road and bridge from our one twenty four twenty twenty four meeting. Twenty twenty, one twenty four twenty twenty five meeting.
Hey, all in favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
All right, second for discussion, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Roll call?
On favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve the purchase orders.
So moved.
Second?
On favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And we'll now entertain a motion to accept the warrants.
So moved.
Second?
On favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we now open up the floor to public comments, we have no signed in individuals from the public speaking today, last call for your opportunity to speak. All right, hearing no public comments, we will move into safety concerns, we'll entertain any safety concerns from board, or department heads? No? All right, we'll move right into the business section of our meeting now, we will hear from the police department, chief Mosley, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Nick, one item under old business, just an update, the twenty twenty four annual report was uploaded to OneDrive for the board this morning, so that's there for your reference to take a look at. One item under new business, we're currently accepting applications for a full time police officer position, do not currently have a vacancy, but in anticipation of a vacancy, so we're just kind of getting out of front of that to start accepting applications, so I'll update the board going forward on that.
Okay.
I do have one item, just gonna also need board approval this morning, that is our twenty twenty five communications services contract with Kent State University and the Brimfield Police Department, that's an annual contract for that service, total amount of seventy seven thousand one hundred fifty five dollars, and that's payable semi annually in April and October, this agreement reflects a two percent increase from the last agreement.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the twenty twenty five communication services services contract Kent State University, Brimfield Police Department in the total amount of seventy seven thousand one hundred fifty five dollars payable semi annually in April and October?
Second.
All right, you still happy with the contract?
Yeah.
No issues?
No issues.
Was there any other contractual language change?
No, everything stayed the same.
All right, we don't really even have a option out there, do we, of anybody else?
Well, I don't wanna say we wouldn't have an option, if we wanted to do that, I mean, that would be a process, I mean, we would need to meet with another provider of dispatch services and records, and that may be a, for example, the city of Ravenna hypothetically, if we wanted to explore that, they use an entirely different record system, doesn't mean that we couldn't transfer over if that was something that the police department or with the support of the board wanted to do, but I would say we've got a really long established record with Kent State PD and their communication services, and we've been very pleased with their services, so haven't seen a need to kind of jump ship from that.
Yeah, I just didn't think, there aren't very many of them out there anymore.
No, there aren't very many, that is true.
Yeah, no, there's one, you have Kent State, Kent, Ravenna, the sheriff's office, 'cause I sit on that nine one one committee, dispatch committee now, and those are the local ones.
Well, isn't Stowe the only one in Summit County?
They have a regional dispatch now for Summit County, so everything for the county operates out of one centralized facility.
Okay, originally Portage was looking at that, but they were able through this nine one one committee to get the state to agree to that we can have multiple licenses in the county.
Okay, I was just, I was curious, and we've had a good, good relationship with him over the years, so.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that's all I have for this morning, thank you.
All right, any questions for the police department? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the fire department, floor is yours, chief Malali.
Okay, just a couple of updates for us here, the twenty twenty four twenty twenty five federal grant has been delayed by the federal government, I don't know what that means, I don't know if we'll see that open back up, but I know there was a delay of about four months, is what I'm hearing, so, again, we put in for the fire truck of around a million dollars, and we'll see if it continues that way or not, I believe that that was not the grants that were supposed to be delayed, so I think they'll work that out, but, that's my, that's my opinion on that. Station punch list is slowly being worked on by Ricon, I did give the punch list back to the architect, so we're all on the same page of what Ron and I deem to be correct and not correct, so they have that to continue to work on. Um, April thirtieth will be the official day for senior luncheon, I know it got mentioned last time, and then I'm working with the guys that usually run it out of my department, and then Rochelle at the PD is helping us do some stuff on that.
Okay.
The only other thing I did not have on there is I will be going out to the schools soon for the entry level firefighter position, and I'm going to work with Holly on job description, which we already had built before, but make sure we're still correct this time around in a flyer to go out, and that will be very soon, Field happens to have a career day coming up, so that'll be one that I'll be attending, and other ones, so.
Okay.
And that's it for us.
All right, any questions for the fire department today? All right, hearing none, thank you for the report, we'll move on to administration, floor is yours.
All right, good morning, so we had been discussing looking at township signs, last year, we got quotes from multiple companies and decided to, on the design that GDI had provided to us, so after last meeting, we wanted to go back and make a couple tweaks to some of the items, so you have before you a couple items in your packet, one is a spreadsheet that lists all of the areas where I believe signage either currently exists or is needed, you also have an updated quote for GDI based on my recent conversation with them, and then you have a third item that is pictures of all of the signs that show up in the spreadsheet, so, not necessarily looking for decision today, but let's just talk through the signs, the design, the language on the signs, I know specifically when we get to the library sign, what do we want to do with that, so if we could just walk through these and start to make some decisions on what we want on them, the look, and then we can come back later for a final decision, I do have Randy here from GDI in case there are any questions about design, product, anything like that. So if you're looking at, and I'll just give you guys a quick minute to look through that.
So we only have the two styles, right, the hanging and the other ones?
Yes, yes, so that smaller.
That's the one we picked before, right?
Correct, yep, that smaller sign was for, for example, like our smaller parks, our athletic fields, and then there's a decision on if we're, if we're going to buy a sign for the library, which sign, you know, which sign size we're going to look at, so yeah, really, I'm looking for, you know, or do you have any questions about the design, do you want those to say anything else on them, just kind of looking for some feedback so we can move towards getting a, a final, a final commitment at some point.
I, I just had, guess have one in GD, GDIs here today, the wood on there, how, how long does that usually last, that's on the outside of the bigger sign?
And Randy, if you don't mind, there's a microphone there, and that way, and if anybody's watching, they could hear it as well.
Yeah, the sign we've designed for longevity, obviously, everything we do, the outside posts will be of solid cedar rough cut, which will pretty much conform to the natural surroundings, cedar, as you know, lasts, I mean, it'll last years and years and years, there may be just a little bit of, of treating to it to keep the color, 'cause cedar does tend to darken over years, the sign itself will be on, on Centra, which is a plastic composite, again, outdoor weatherproof with UV protected vinyl.
I was just thinking about the cedar part there, if it was gonna rot in ten years, or we're gonna have to go replace it.
And what that'll do, the, the two inside posts will be sunk into the ground, and then the outside post will attach to those, saving a little bit of cost, but still giving that, that dimensional look to it.
Okay, so if you want to start with the picture, so the community center, also in your packet, I included pictures of the existing signs, because, you know, we'll need to discuss, you know, some of those, some of those are in fine shape, some of them are a little rough, you know, so we'll just need to talk about also which ones we're ready to move forward with now, and which ones we want to wait on, of course, the longer we wait, the sign prices are gonna increase, so my goal today is just kind of to whittle it down to some final look, and then come back maybe at the next meeting and talk about how we want to move forward, so, I guess, just even looking at this, you see the community, the Brimfield Community Center sign, our current sign has some language on it about art, play, meet, and I looked into that, at one point, we thought there was possibly a grant where we had to have some extra language on our signage, I couldn't find anything on that, so I removed it from this, you know, this design proposal, so I don't know if you guys have any comments on the community center sign, do you like the way it looks, do we want to add anything else on there?
No, I mean, I like how it looks, I, really, I, I think we just want a clean look, not too much information, it allows things to be bigger, people can quickly see it, I, I like how that looks, my question is, if we're trying to have uniformity though, too, can we do some enter and exit signs that, I know we have them up now, but that match this design as part of that then?
Yes, yeah.
Because we have this nice beautiful sign, then we got this cheap hanging sign that says enter or exit, I think they, they need to conform together somehow, I don't know if that's a piece that, we don't need a giant enter or exit sign, right?
Are we thinking something like we installed, or we developed over here at the cemetery, which would be, or you want a little bit smaller?
It's not that big over there.
Yeah, I, I think I'd have to go look at it again to see, but yeah, something in that, I just want it to match this aesthetic.
Yeah, those signs are, are the sign.
Yeah, that's, that sign's not that big over there, getting into cemeteries.
I want some of the smaller part, and we, we can talk and kind of look at that, since all of you can't see what we're looking at, we're, we're looking to.
Joe, can you put it up on the TV?
I don't know if you can display, I can send it to you, Joe, to see, but we are looking to somewhat match our, our big township signs, so the ones coming in and out, the design is going to be similar.
The community center, just so you know, is, is unique, because it has two driveways, and people get confused, and they go in both the same ways, and then we, we have that, that traffic flow problem, so.
Well, I know this was our, this was our twenty five project that we've been putting out for a while now, I know that we.
Well, I think we, we, I mean, I think we just need to narrow it down today, but I don't think we're ready for a vote on it, because we're still waiting for budget.
No, I get that, but I know that, we were, I think we just need to keep moving on with this, because we just.
I mean, honestly, I, I looked through these signs, I like how they all look, my question is, on the big sign, if we decide to make that transition to the bigger sign for the library, how difficult is it if the library left in five years from now to slide out that insert to put a new insert in, is that something that could be done?
We would probably just put a, a new face over it, because it's gonna be permanently attached, it won't be a slide in insert, but we, that'll be out of, like I said, a thicker Centra, we could lay a small aluminum face over that, or a smaller thinner Centra face over that, if you wanted to do something else with it.
Okay, so we could change that in the future if we needed to, without redoing the whole process?
Correct. And I had, I had them design two different signs, Joe, as you scroll through, I think it's the last, it's somewhere, the Portage County Library signs, so there's the larger sign, if we wanted to go with that, or the next slide is just a smaller sign, of course, there's, you know, a cost difference, and then similarly with this design, if, if for summary, at some point, the library were to leave, you're just replacing that attached sign a little bit easier to maintain if there's, if there's changes.
I like the larger sign for the library, it's just because there's so much wordage, it's, it's easier to read, when you get on that small sign, that, that font got shrunk down so much, makes it a little more difficult for visibility.
Well, don't we have that same size sign for all of our township buildings?
Yeah, because we're doing it for the community center, we're doing it for some of our bigger parts, I think consistency is the key, I think the small parks or the small sports fields, that's okay to go with a smaller sign, but I think with the library, I'd like to see us have this larger.
I would just think that it's one of our, it's one of our buildings, and it should match what all of our other building signs are, so.
The other piece, or you'll see on the spreadsheet, I did designate where I thought we would want lighting, and so in working with GDI, we would be looking at a similar lighting panel as to the one that we up, just recently upgraded our big signs to, and if you don't mind speaking to that, just because I have gotten some questions on how that panel works.
Yeah, those particular solar powered lights, the original ones that were on the welcome, welcome to Brimfield signs, those were a little bit smaller, they were self-contained, and as we all know, technology's continually evolving, the new ones that we just, that were just installed here recently, those are leaps and bounds ahead of what was there just a year or so prior, and they're all self-contained, so some of those larger solar panels with longer lasting energy, they have separate battery packs, it really becomes kind of an eyesore, these particular ones that we're recommending for these community park signs, they're all self-contained, the batteries, the recharging systems are all within the sign, so that's all you see, very, very little, if any maintenance at all to them.
But I missed the first part of it, I was right, the, the signs, the welcome to town signs, those are the new lights that we have in there.
Yeah, those have already been.
Because the one in, by the high school, I didn't even, hadn't never noticed it until drove by the other day, and it was like, it was shining.
Yeah, the original ones, they, they would illuminate, but they're not, they're not.
That looked really nice.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't as impactful as the ones we have now, and also the ones that we have, that we've just installed, and the ones that we're recommending, they also have a, a timer to them, so as it gets later at night, two in the morning, or whatever time, they will actually dim down a little bit and not use quite as much power, so it can, it can hold its power till the next day, in case we have a lot of cloud cover or rain or whatever, that it's not pulling enough solar energy to regenerate the batteries.
Okay. So at this point, I think now that you guys have this information, if we could come back at our next meeting, and guys take some time, look over it, I'll be looking for a couple things, or is the language good on the signs, do you want any changes there? We'll just need to make a final decision on the library sign, which size we want, the ones that I've identified lighting for, just looking to get your agreement there, and then once we get there, I'll work with Dave and Cassie, and we'll, we'll identify locations for these signs, and of course, from John, just looking for timing, so, as I mentioned, some of our signs are in okay condition that exists, but it'll come down to, do we just want to go ahead and move forward with this pricing now, if we stagger it, you could be paying, you know, more in the coming years, so it's just a matter of, do we want to go ahead and move forward now with all of them, or, like I said, stagger it to break down the cost.
Just in past experience, I, if we stagger them, we're gonna be, five years from now, we're not gonna have all the signs up.
Well, and then you risk the one time. Board changes, then you get design changes, then we're back to this hodgepodge that we have, right, I mean, the signs we have are nice, but they're all different designs, there's no consistency, we're not building that brand for the township, so I think putting this all together in one final package price is good, also, for lighting, I think any of the big signs should be lit, and then the, the single post ones, I don't necessarily need lights on those, you could, so, look at this post again.
And while you're looking at that, I did add, on the Maguire Park sign, we, I thought that was a nice, nice way to recognize Tim and Mildred, so you'll see on that design, it does have language, it says donated by Tim and Mildred, yeah, donated by Tim and Mildred Maguire, just thought that was nice for people to see as they entered, since that was such a generous donation.
Oh, yeah, I think that's great.
And if we have a park in honor of somebody like our Mezner Akers, we could put that on there, when we do that, on the smaller signs, the, the hanging ones, is that just a four by four post with like a, a sleeve over it, like you do with decking, essentially?
Actually, we're recommending aluminum, that's what, original, the original layouts back before we did the cemetery enter and exits were wood, that we found we could do the aluminum as cheap, it'll last much longer, and be much more durable, obviously, and with these signs for the parks and rec, we can do a powder coating instead of painting, at virtually the same price.
Okay.
The company we work with, they do us a, a great job at a very reasonable price, and we pass that savings along to the township as well, so yeah, there'll be aluminum, square aluminum with powder coating.
Okay. One reason I was asking, because if it's that four by four, have you seen the deck lights that go on top of the post?
Yes.
That could be something that we could add if we wanted to light that in the future, I was just looking for size comparison.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, Sue, do you have any questions?
No.
John, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming in today to answer our questions.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Um, new business?
I like the design of maintaining the gazebo, that's on our street signs, too.
Yeah, that looks nice, yeah, these turned, I really, I'm happy with the designs, they turned out really nice. Great, new business, I will be putting out a notice, the February nineteenth trustee meeting is gonna need to be rescheduled to February thirteenth at four PM, so I'll look to, if, if that provides you guys with enough time, I'll put this on that agenda, so hopefully we can circle back and make some final decisions, oh, I did want to note on those signs, so the, the way it was drafted up is that Brimfield would do the installation of the signs, and GDI would do the installation of the lights, so that's just another component there.
John, do we need a vote to change the meeting?
We do.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to change the February nineteenth trustee meeting to February thirteenth at four PM.
Second.
On favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And then, final item for board approval, approval is needed to accept the resolution for the twenty twenty five NOPEC energized community grant in the amount of twenty three thousand two hundred and ninety six dollars.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the NOPEC, twenty twenty five NOPEC energized community grant in the amount of twenty three thousand two hundred and ninety six dollars.
So moved.
I'll second that.
On favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I wanted to note, so Sue and I attended the Ohio Township Association Conference last week, and we went to an event sponsored by NOPEC, and I forget his name, but Mr. NOPEC, I'll call him, was there and talking about the grants, and, you know, we have posted things about these grants, we recently re-sided our community center with the NOPEC funds, and I think one of the comments I got on, on Facebook was, oh, great, that's where, that's where all of our money goes from paying our, our energy bills, and this was actually something that they touched upon in that event, that the funds that they give back to community partners and the grants for businesses are not derived from what everybody pays for their bills, this is actually something that they build into their negotiation process, but I thought it was interesting, because that's something we off, often get questions on, is, oh, we're all paying for these improvements, but they're actually getting it from the companies they work with, and the agreements that they have, so just thought that was an interesting note.
All right, thank you for that. All right.
And that's all I have.
All right, any questions for administration? Hearing none, we'll move into zoning and economic development, Holly, you gonna give the report?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, old business, there is an item for board approval, approval is needed to waive the variance application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for twenty three sixty nine Towneich Road, this was requested in mediation by the property owner, and also, it was a request of the mediation judge to help get this property cleaned up.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to waive the variance application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for twenty three sixty nine Towneich Road.
So moved.
I'll second for discussion, so this came from the magistrate, I talked with our zoning economic developer, the magistrate asked if the board would entertain this motion to help move this forward.
Help me again, where's twenty three sixty nine again? Which one is that?
It's the one, it's the one with the trailers?
One with all the horse trailer tractors in the front yard.
It's out towards Ritz Town.
I attended that hearing, or that mediation.
The guy that has all the signs on the left hand side?
No, not him, it's before you get to his place.
Okay, I just have to drive out there, I guess I don't, yeah, all in favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
New business, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting of February nineteenth twenty twenty five is canceled due to no applications, total zoning fees to date is ten thousand twenty two dollars and eighty cents, Mike Ladd has been working with our attorney on the following new TIFs, so VA Cancer Imaging and Infusion, Infusion Center, looking for a TIF for capital improvements to Maguire Park, Dunkin' Donuts looking for capital improvement to Road Department Salt Dome, the Brimfield Commons Plaza for capital improvements to Town Center sidewalks and lighting, Joe's Barbecue for capital improvements to Town Sun, Center sidewalks and lighting, and then Discount Drug Mart for capital improvements to Town Center sidewalks and lighting as well.
All right, so this piece does, we wanted to bring to the floor for some discussion amongst the board, this is our chance to get some of those dollars to help with those projects, and we'd like to try to finalize this, so if there's areas that we see a need financially, John, we can kind of move these around, this was just their original thought process, I know talking with Mike Ladd last night, that we talked about changing one of these, I believe, the Brimfield Commons Plaza, to adding in their improvement to Road Department Salt Dome, we just, we're not sure if Duncan will bring in enough money to cover that project for the Salt Dome, so we might add that as a secondary piece under that, that TIF.
I'm, I'm good with that, I just want to make sure that we have wording out there that when the Salt Dome's done, and the sidewalks are done, we have money in there, we're just not stuck, we have to have something for, in general, Brimfield Township debts, or whenever we.
So the way it works, we actually, we're talking, just talking about this yesterday, is one, so let's just say the TIF is there, and we've got enough money, and we're done, this new Salt Dome is in place, the remaining TIF funds then go into the general fund?
With no requirements on either side?
No requirements, just go into general fund.
Okay, that works.
Until the TIF agreement is, is done, so, yeah, once, once one of these improvements is completed, then the funds just go to general fund and can be used for any items.
I just didn't want them capped in that, when now we got thirty thousand dollars for Salt Dome that we're never gonna use.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I think the other piece that we need to consider though is on at least one or two of these, adding police to one, fire to one. Just because it gives us another revenue source, if for some reason we need to fund those departments for whatever it is, I'd like to see them tied into each of these. Um, because that just, that gives us some longitude, right? Like I'd love to put a sidewalk in, but I'm not gonna lay off safety forces over a sidewalk. So I, I just need to make sure that we have those opportunities for additional funding.
Yeah, I was trying, trying to remember right now, but there are, and, and I don't know if Roy knows offhand, but I'm trying to think. I know there are a number of other ones that are set up, the T I F's are set up for police and fire, I just can't recall.
To my knowledge, there's one for police, I think that's Maple Crest, it is one. Um, that's, I've had some discussions with Mike and then with Mark Goddaddy the last time he was here to kind of get some further information on that, because I have a little bit of ambiguity, but yes.
But I'd like them to be a secondary on there, John, if that makes sense, so that if we ever run into that financial position, we have enough, a fund line that we can work on.
Well, that, just from a general fund perspective down the road, if we ever needed to donate money to um or transfer money to any of those departments, we could. Um, but if it's in those departments and we needed it all of a sudden in one of the other ones, we can't transfer it out of there. So I'd, I'd rather, I mean, I, I like that we have money over there for the, the police out there, but I wouldn't want the, the, the end-all to go to payroll for all the departments. It'd be better to go into the general fund, because then we can, we can hand it out to those departments.
What I'm worried about though is, let's say that we're a year into this and we're just starting the sidewalk project, but we need to fund into emergency services for some reason. We couldn't from the way it's being described until that sidewalk project's done. So if we added police and fire to it, it gives us a way to funnel that earlier to those departments. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I, I guess I'd rather have it funneled to the general fund if that was the case and then transferred to those guys.
But I don't think we can take it to general fund until the project's done. That's what we need clarification on.
Yeah, so uh, I.
You see what I'm saying, like, if, if it says that we have to finish the sidewalk project before we can dip into that money to support other divisions, then we need to add other divisions to it on the front end so that we could dip into it earlier if we had to.
No, I get it, and I need more info on that, because we have, there's different rules on how I can transfer in advance money. General fund's the only one that can transfer it out, the other ones can't. I mean, so if it was in police and I needed it for fire, I can't get it out of there.
Right.
Um.
But I also want to make sure that we can get it to there if we need.
No, I know, but if it was in the general fund, we could direct it, the board could direct it to wherever you wanted it to go.
Yeah.
I guess that just, from, it just makes it easier down the road.
So I think we need clar-, you, you understand what I'm asking for?
So I'll meet with Mike and, and we can put this again on the, on our next agenda as well for further follow-up.
Is there any other large projects that we're missing that need this T I F funding?
Well, we do have the building for the Road Crew Department, which the Salt Dome is part of that, so.
Okay.
Um, Admin and Fire should be good for a long time. Um, I don't know, I mean, eventually, Roy, we're gonna have to add on to your police department over there. And whatever we do with that, I don't know when that comes around. And then I don't know if there's any places where we have money to acquire land if we needed to. Like where we're thinking in the back, back there, if we needed to buy something back there that we wanted for other purposes, that we had money sitting aside for that.
So I think those are the things that we need to think about as we lead, lead into the next meeting. Talking with uh council about this too, there's a good chance we couldn't loan against the JED money. Remember, we could only loan against a very small percentage because payroll could change. He believes that the rules are much different when it comes to the T I F dollars, so that gives us some lending opportunities there too then. So we really just need to think about where these dollars go, because that'll open up those opportunities.
Okay, so we'll bring this back um to the next meeting if you guys want to think about it and we can discuss more with Mike.
So you got any questions?
No.
All right.
That's it.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you so much. Any other questions about zoning? Right, not, uh, we'll turn to the Road Department. Dave, where's yours, sir?
Morning everybody. Ah, when I wrote this report, we had, we just got two hundred ton of salt in, well, salt mine broke loose. We're uh, we actually got all six hundred tons should be in by tomorrow morning. So we should be going good, we got trucks coming like crazy right at the moment. Uh, but on the flip side of that, that's the end of our salt food year too. Once it's in the building, that's what we got for the rest of the season. So we still will probably be doing a little bit of playing with how we put salt down and stuff like that on certain things. Uh, we've been working on trucks since we finally got a break in uh weather action and a few residential complaints. Just some plow damage, this kind of stuff, and few odds and ends. Uh, new business, we uh, I sent over the road list for the twenty twenty-five Chipton Seal and paving projects, the Portage County Engineers for review. They'll get back with me, they're gonna look at some things, I put in a few different roads, I want them to check which, they feel if they're just as bad as what I'm feeling on them. Uh, they'll come back with their recommendation probably in a, in a bottom month. So uh, we've been working on clearing some water issues here and there from all the, from all the melting right now. We're having issues of backing up culvert pipes, that kind of stuff. Uh, once we get some dry weather, where it actually dries out some, we're gonna start doing some uh coal mixing. Hopefully if the weather breaks the right way, I'd like to get our dirt patch route before I do a bunch of coal mixing, just dirt patch. But we'll have to see how this weather's gonna play games with us for right now. And uh, I got one item for board approval. Approval needed for the twenty twenty-four Certified Annual Township Highway Mileage Certification.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four Certified Annual Township Highway Mileage Certification.
So moved.
Second for discussion. Did you see any issues with it, Dave? Did it look correct with our records?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We added like three tenths of a mile, which is Maple Crest and that stuff over there.
So we're now at forty-six point nine one five miles of public roads.
Yes. And on favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, one other thing, uh, hope everybody's ready for the ice storm tonight. It's, we're gearing up, we might, we're gonna see what we gotta do with it, but it could be pretty messy out there over right first thing in the morning, so watch, watch your drive. We'll be trying to watch our drive and we got big trucks sliding on roads too, so. All right, I heard that and that's all I got.
Great. We'll move into, or any questions for Road Department? All right, hearing none, we'll move into Parks and Rec, any updates, Holly, that we need?
Uh, no updates.
All right.
Cassie and Hannah are at the uh Park uh Conference and they return tomorrow.
Okay. And then we'll move into information technology. Yeah, Laura's yours, sir.
All right, um, so what I have is just an update on the uh Otarma Cyber Risk Visit. Um, we had uh, you know, the update from last week or la- last meeting. Um, so I'm reviewing our records management plan uh with Holly and I sent a copy of, to John from uh Otarma, actually sent me a sample record management plan that they uh use. And then Holly also sent me a record plan from uh, I uh, prior uh county that she worked for. Uh, so we're gonna review that and then uh probably work with the department heads to go over that. But I, I think we're just gonna use a, pretty much a standard canned uh record management plan, nothing special there. So I feel we should have that in place uh soon. Um, server upgrades, uh, the order has been placed. Um, I expect to have a licensing from Microsoft here in the next week. And then I will work with the uh Police Department to schedule the server upgrades um on their side. And the township should be pretty seamless, we don't have as much on our side. Uh, cybersecurity training, um, I'm getting quotes, um, starting to get a few of them back, they're, they're fairly reasonable, so I don't expect any problems there. Uh, disaster recovery and business continuity, that's something I've been working on for a while. Kind of was put on the black burner last year because of the construction project. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and uh just plan on having that complete by the end of the month. And then the proactive and routine penetration testing, um, I have discovered or government informed that actually Otarma is putting on offering that as a service. Um, so I'm gonna get in line to be, get more information from them, but potentially might be one of the first townships that they offer that to or work with us on. So if that works out, that'll actually be done uh at no additional cost for us, since that's a service that they're looking to offer. So that, uh, as long as they meet all the criteria needed um to, you know, from a certification standpoint, um, which obviously I'll work with the police department on, um, I think that would be our best bet, because it's, you know, be at no cost. Um, I also am looking at, I am also getting quotes from outside vendors still, just in case the Otarma thing does not pan out. So I, I think we're where we want to be, potentially have all of this uh, you know, either in place or um have an action plan by the end of the month.
Okay, all right, yeah, I guess that would be my big ask, is that um, Joe, you and Holly work together to just get to the board a final action plan with dates on it. So because this is in response to a risk assessment, not an internal piece, I think we need to document, this is our action plan, these are the dates. You know, things come up, we can adjust dates if we need to, but this way it's before the board and we approve that action plan in response to that risk assessment. So if we could have that at the, by the end of the month, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, questions on the risk assess, risk assessment response plan? All right, any questions for I T? All right, hearing none, thank you. Uh, cemetery.
I don't have anything.
All right.
I want next meeting.
Okay, and fiscal office?
Um, the budget for the, estimated budget for the county has been turned in. I have meetings scheduled next week on Monday and Wednesday. Police firing roads to go through their uh internal budget stuff. Um, I already have documentation from Holly on I T and uh zoning and admin. So we're coming to the end stages of having the budget to bring to the, the board to get finalized.
So we probably won't have it at our meeting on the thirteenth?
No. I'm afraid I'll do it the one after that, but I'm meeting.
Okay, just I don't want to make any big financial decisions to weigh that final piece in front of us. Okay. And John, can you include with that, even if it's just a side note, what our estimated costs are gonna be on this building project? So we can kind of plan, like worst-case scenario almost. If we can get a close, if you can work with Holly and maybe get a close estimate on what.
Yeah, I know, um, Craig, how much, how much more do you think they have to finish over there and is anything gonna cost us anymore? You know, um, it should be all under the, their contract. We have not added any additional.
So I'd just like to get a rough estimate, because I know it's gonna go through a legal process, but that gives us, hey, this is worst-case scenario, then we can plan for projects moving forward. So we could have that with the budget.
Yep, I would try to do what I can do with that.
Okay. All right, all right, um, anything else for fiscal office?
No.
And for the good of Brimfield Township, board members and department heads, anything else that we need to cover? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed, we're adjourned at eight forty-one A M.
All right, everyone have a great day. Okay.